So don't say anything you don't want to know about that thing.
About that.
Yeah, don't worry about that.
Let's bring the city council workshop August twentieth, twentieth, two thousand twenty four to order. Please rise for the rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Present.
And Councilmember Rock.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Angela Baldwin from this evening's council workshop.
I'm moved.
Second. All in favor of excusing Councilmember Baldwin from the workshops, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. All right, we'll now go on to review of council minutes. Councilmember Fullerton, Councilmember Hubler.
Did see some change and I sent that in to Leslie, so I'm. I don't know if it got changed yet. It usually gets changed before the next meeting, correct? Or I sent it to Amanda or somebody. I just like sent it back to whoever sent to me.
Candace.
The one.
Okay, whoever I sent it to, they said, thank you, they got it, so.
All right, going to open, council open discussion.
Oh, is it open discussion already?
Yeah, going quick.
Okay, yeah. Well, I did work, I have been working on the council interview process and procedures. So I do have that. I feel like we probably need to have a discussion at some point. This would be for interviewing new council or appointing council members. So I just added a few things, so I can go ahead and give this to Sadie. Want to hand that over. And again, these are just my suggestions, so I just took my, from my old workshop or workbook that I have from council that I received. The original two point zero four point one thousand applications and interview procedures. This is the original one, and then I showed my work and what I changed. The council during a regular or special council meeting, open to the public, will interview all candidates who submit an application by the deadline for the advertised council vacancy. Council applicants will be asked to remain outside the council chambers while other applicants are being interviewed. Applicants will be asked to answer questions submitted to them in advance of the interview and questions posted by each council member during the interview process. The council member will ask the same questions of each candidate. Each candidate will be allowed to, two minutes for closing comments. So my final draft, I just went kind of almost verbatim and then just did my changes. So the new process that I was thinking would be good is the council during a regular workshop or special council meeting, open to the public, shall interview all applicants who submit an application by the deadline for advertised council vacancy. Council applicants, instead of candidates, because they're not running for something, so I put, I changed it to applicants, so council applicants shall be asked to remain outside council chambers while an applicant is being interviewed. Applicants shall be asked to answer questions submitted to them in advance of the interview and questions posed by council members during the interview process. The council members shall ask the same question of each applicant. Council members may ask up to three questions of each applicant and each, and each council member shall have exclusive right to ask any applicant for clarification of the applicant's answer during the interview process. Each applicant shall be allowed three minutes for closing comments. And so that is basically all I changed at that point. And it's just procedures allowing council members to ask more than one question, to be able to ask up to three questions.
I was going to clarify, it was like that, what you were saying.
Yeah, so that got added, also that the person is an applicant, not a candidate. And then basically, even if you do ask the three questions instead of just one, and that's a may, which means you can ask one question or up to three, and then you can also, in addition, ask for clarification for each of your questions. However, if you ask three questions, you have to ask those exact three questions to every single applicant, so.
So on your clarifying questions, do they have to only be for your questions? Or could they be for any of the council questions?
We can, we can put that in there too, because I know that there were some questions that people would have liked to ask, so if we want to open that up, that, say you only ask one question, but then you have a clarification question for somebody else's. I think that while it's in process of the interview, so I think during that interview process, while you have that applicant there, you should be able to do, you know, to ask clarifying questions from another council member. But those clarifying questions are based off of how the applicants answer. So it's going to switch up. Those, those clarifying questions are not going to have to be identical to the question, so we probably need to put that in there in like parentheses or something, that a clarifying question is not, you don't have to ask that same clarifying question to each candidate, because as they're answering, you know, their, their answers are going to prompt you to look at, you know, well, that didn't make sense. I need to make sure that this person understands what the question was, so.
Right.
Anyway. So I don't know what the procedures are, or, you know, I'm just kind of putting it out there for discussion and, you know.
We're gonna get that written up and go through finance committee with it and get it like out there, because this is kind of a little, you know.
Inprompt, too.
My version of it has the ability of the council members to ask, you know, similar questions to councils, so. You know, because I think it's a little bit kind of weird to have to be required to ask the same question of the same council candidate, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's have that discussion before we bring it to.
Sure, yeah, we can have the next finance committee meeting and get it.
Do we want to discuss it at the next finance committee? Do you and I need to get together?
Yeah, we can do that.
And put your ideas with my ideas and then.
And meld them together and.
Something to put together and.
Go sponsored.
Right, yeah.
Are you partisan? Oh, no, it's not.
Nonpartisan.
There you go.
Yeah, I like the idea of adding in clarifying questions to anybody's.
Yeah, okay.
Because that, I, yeah, after you said that, I was like, yeah, there were some times you're like.
Like, what did you say?
Yeah, what did that really mean?
That was a really good question, but I didn't understand the answer.
There you go, right?
I didn't ask that question.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you for that. So I'll go to finance. All right, any other discussion? Just for Hubler.
Something that, when I was talking to Candace, because there was, in one of the meetings, I thought I had made a. What do you call it?
Comment or a report or a motion?
Motion, that's it. So I thought I had made the motion, but it wasn't me. It was actually Gwen that had made it, and so when I was talking with Candace about it, she's like, sometimes it's really hard for us to hear you guys, because everybody pushes the mics back away from you. So it would be awesome if we remember to make sure that we're close enough to the mic so that they can hear in the minutes, or when they're going back through and writing up the minutes. So I didn't realize that was so hard for them to hear. Okay, so just making sure that we always have that close enough that they can hear us.
And I, I did see that, that you sent that in, and I think in my mind, because I was thinking the same thing, but I think you, you asked if we needed to make a motion, so then I made the motion, and I think you seconded or something.
Somebody else did, but yeah, and that's what she's saying. She's like, you know, we went back through and we listened, and this is what, and I was like, ah, so that was perfect, but that was like, oh, I guess we need to make sure we're close enough.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. We'll now move on to our discussion item. Madam Clerk.
This is a discussion item only for AB twenty four seventy four, resolution R twenty four seventy four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bonny Lake Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign a two-year contract with Flock Safety for Flock cameras and to accept a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar grant from WATPA to fully fund this program.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to say something to this?
Yeah, good evening, council and mayor. This is just a chance to come back in a workshop and discuss this further. It's been in front of public safety. You've had the presentation on it, some questions, and then afterward, there was time to submit some questions and answer those. So Kristin from Flocks back with us again tonight online, and then I'm here to answer any other questions or concerns you might have, and in the end, get some direction. We should bring this to you in council or let it go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McLehman's.
So thank you for dealing with my questions. I really appreciate that. I actually really appreciated your write-up at the end, right? And really appreciated that, because somebody's got to keep an eye on the mayor.
One guy, right?
That guy, but, but really, so, and then I'd like to share with the council. Obviously, in our world, artificial intelligence is moving very quickly. The technology is actually been around for much longer than most people would suspect. There's a lot of infrastructure that's out there, but it's, in the end, it's really just a guess, right? It's a weighted guess. If you use neural networks and some other algorithms, you can limit the paths through to narrow the possible guess down, is probably a simple way to put it, but you're still guessing, right? So you guess faster. You probably guess better, because you get a smaller set of guesses. With image processing, thanks to the magic of Facebook and some other algorithms, we've kind of got that pretty much in a can, right? Can pick out images fairly well. That, that technology's been commoditized to where you can see that it can be used by lots of different people. The questions that I asked them were fairly technical, not, not super technical. I think my overall view of their technical is that they've done a reasonable job at trying to secure the information and implementing their, implementing their solution in a reasonable way. I'm still a little nervous about the. It would be harder, let me put it this way, it would be, if there was anything that I could support as far as security was concerned, they answered the questions, right, with what I would think a government agency, a non-Department of Defense government agency could do, right? So it's good work overall from a security standpoint. It's still not secure, right? It's just not. So you gotta know that nation-state actors such as Iran, China, North Korea, others, have a complete access to systems like this, right? Much to our consternation. The only way to prevent this would be to step on the Second Amendment and limit free speech, right? And then start, you know, actually restricting access to the internet, right? Which isn't going to happen. So anyway, other than that, so really, what we're, what I'm trying to say is, the solution, when they take a picture of your car, which they say they're taking a picture of license plate, but they're not, they're taking a picture, right? It's going to get other things, there's possibilities of, you don't know what, what else is going to be in the picture. They're after the license plate, but there are always artifacts that exist in these pictures outside what your target is, that are usually identified by some image of incineration. All of that, probably, most people, I don't think actors are going to be able to get into it. I think it's safe. I don't think it's going to be able to be used coercively unless there's a nation-state that's trying to do that, which, why would a nation-state care about Bonny Lake? Or one of our own actors inside the system, right? So the policy really should be aimed at, how do we protect this information from, right? How do we monitor and do it? Because surveillance is dangerous in the sense of it can be abused, and it will, it will be abused eventually. So it's just like, you know, I look at this, introducing surveillance into the city. I don't know, this is really hard for me, because we can get reasonable value out of it, but it's still the first step in surveillance, and a lot of constituents, their first reaction is no, right? I don't want my picture taken when I come and go from Bonny Lake, right? And that's kind of understandable. The, most of them, if you say the follow-up question is, if this helps prevent child abduction, you know, those sorts of things, what do you think? They kind of hem and haw about it, but everybody still wonders, right? So I don't know, so it's hard for me because of that. Technically, it's a good solution. Internal actors can cause problems. Or, and that's a policy issue, or nation-states can easily cause problems if they want your data, because it's license plate data, I'm not sure it's a big deal. You got, you got to decide that, right? So that's my assessment of this solution. I see that the, we believe this is worthwhile enough to go get the grant and that the grant money's out there, right? So I think, if I, I'm not sure if I can support this yet or not, to be candid. If I could support it, I could really only support it if it had a definite sunset clause on it after the term of the grant, right? Just to make sure that it doesn't. It doesn't go into, you know, perpetuity. That's all I have.
Any other?
I loved your questions, that, those are things I would have never thought of, because the technical side, and that's not how my brain works, so I'm glad you guys think that way, because I don't. But I loved all the answers that we did get back. My personally, I think, reading through that, I still don't quite understand how Kelly's brain works. It works in a way mine doesn't work. But I appreciate that his does work that way, because it helps us to look at things a little differently. So I like your explanation on a lot of that. I personally think, just going back through all of that, I think I'm okay with it, because if it's just license plates, if it's not taking pictures of faces, it's not taking, and it's only there to just identify those license plates if they're needed, and then only our department has access to it, correct?
No, we can share with other law enforcement agencies.
But to begin with, like, when it first comes in, you see it, and if they, is it, they, if, if they're looking for something, then we have it first cloud, right? You see it as like the chief, you would be like, okay, this, this one popped into the system. Here is our image of it, this is where it was at? And then it goes out to the other agencies or do?
No, there's a network, so let's, let's use PLPD, for example. And they request to be in our network, and we're going to share the license plate information back and forth. Say they're looking for a homicide suspect, and it goes through one of our intersections, we will get the hit, and they will get the hit at the same time.
Okay.
And, and just, because we want to be really transparent, it is more than the license plate, right? It is the color of the car, the model of the car, whether or not it has roof racks, bumper stickers, other kind of fingerprints specific to a vehicle, so it is more than the license plate, but it did not give you the DOL data. So it's not the same as when we run a license plate and then gives the registered owners and all that kind. That is not part of this system. Kristin?
Are you saying? Hello, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you for having me join you again this time. I would just like to offer, kind of in addition to what Chief just noted, that with regard to maybe a person being captured in an image or, you know, other items being captured in an image, there is no way in the system to filter for a person or anything outside of vehicle attributes only. And then, secondly, I'd like to offer, as far as sharing with other law enforcement agencies, anytime a law enforcement agency would access your data, that is also recorded by a user ID, and then also that search reason is recorded, and Chief will have that as part of an audit trail that will be kept indefinitely.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, before we leave that particular subject, on the attributes of the vehicles and stuff like that, because I've heard that, you know, there's enhancement packages or what have you. I don't know what's your version of the software that we have, maybe, you know, that we're gonna, because there, you know, you could find red trucks or whatever and stuff like that, right? I don't know if that's a feature that we're not getting, or we are getting, or are we just getting the, the LPR portion of it, or how that?
I'm not sure about enhancement packages. Kristin, do you, you could do like a sound, like a shot technology. We're not doing anything.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if, because again, if you, you know, you knew the suspect was in red truck, red large truck or whatever, that you could be able to try to narrow that down a little bit.
Correct, that, that is the package we're getting.
Yeah, that, that kind of a thing, yeah.
Yeah.
No, shall I, shall I go? Go ahead.
Yeah, Councilmember Fullerton.
Thank you. At public safety, last week, you brought forward that we have actually benefited, even though we don't have the Flock system. Do you want to?
Sure, so we've already identified suspects in five different cases. We want, so Lowe's, and we talk about retail theft, and we want our box stores to help us with retail theft. Lowe's has already installed Flock cameras nationwide. Home Depot has just entered into a contract, so two of our larger stores have it. But from Lowe's alone, we've been able to solve crimes. Some of them are retail theft, but one was a hit and run, where the vehicle left the road, went through Lowe's, and we were able to identify the suspect vehicle, get the plate, and then through further identification, you know, further investigation, identify the suspect. And then the other one, I don't know if it was, it's another city, I can't remember, but we put out a BOLO for it and asked them, because we knew the person went through there, hey, have you ever seen this vehicle? They put it through, right? And we were able to get, yep, the car came through, this is the car, go through and do our investigation and identify the suspect as well. So even without it, just people on the periphery were already identifying suspects that otherwise would have gone unidentified.
All right, thank you. Another question. Councilmember Davis.
First of all, I just wanted to thank Councilmember McLehman for the technical information there. I think you are a very reliable source to understand this a little bit more in depth than I would, so I appreciate that. Kind of going along with what Chief Barry was just talking about. Privacy concerns are obviously an issue, but as we drive through Lowe's, Home Depot, other places, we're being, our pictures are being taken already with Flock cameras. But that doesn't necessarily mean that's okay for us to do it, but to integrate it with those systems would definitely be helpful in eliminating not only stolen cars, which may not be a huge problem right now in Bonny Lake, but I know we've had discussions about retail theft and trying to hold some of the larger box stores accountable for retail theft, and this is one way that to integrate with them and, and help them understand, like, okay, maybe you don't have to pursue the theft, but then we now have an option, if they can call quickly, we can use a Flock system to try to help push that down. A lot of times, I think people look at, you know, government entities as being reactive, a lot of times, and I think this is an opportunity for us to be proactive and get ahead of some of the problems, lifestyle crimes that are happening, to try to help keep those low in Bonny Lake.
Thank you. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I think one of my other questions that I had asked you as well was, is this ever going to be turned into giving tickets? If somebody runs a red light or whatever, so is this going to end up being a process where in the future, we're going to start handing out tickets because we have this Flock system? Can it be upgraded into something like that, which I don't agree with, but.
Cannot at this time. It doesn't do, so when you just take red light cameras, you need to have a video, and it needs to show the process and the whole path of the vehicle, and that's not what this system does. It doesn't have radars, so when you have the speed cameras, they have to have self-calibrating, they have to have radars. This system doesn't have that. Is there a possibility to integrate it with another system? Probably, but I have not heard council have any support for that, so I'm not proceeding with that at all. I've been going through different policies, looking at Yakima, Vallejo, California, and Buena Park, who are both Ninth Circuit Court cities, so this has been vetted through the same district court that we're in, federal district court, and all of them really limit this to criminal investigations, not to civil, and traffic infractions are civil. Now, if someone were to run a red light and then hit a car, injure people, and take off, that then becomes criminal, and we would absolutely use it to try and identify that person. But as far as civil infractions, speeding, not using your turn signal red lights, this camera doesn't, this system does not have the ability to do this, and I'm not looking to bring that forward to you unless you tell me to find it.
So that would, that was my next question, and so in the future, if that was something that you decided that the police force would like to implement, that would actually have to be a separate contract or a separate ability, and that would also come to a future council to vote on and make a decision at that time. So this isn't going to tie us to anything that could change in the future without another vote from council.
Correct, and kind of even going back to the sunset clause, my grant covers this for two years, and I have no revenue stream to renew it, right? So if you like it, and the process is going well, and you're, you think this is a good system, I'll start looking for additional revenue streams. But the truth is, in two years, we're out of money, we can't pay for it. If we don't find the revenue, if we don't want to do it, Flock comes, they take their stuff, they go home. We're not on the hook for anything else.
And I know I shared a personal story with you about a serial killer that was caught in Scottsdale, Scottsdale, Arizona, because the surprise had a stolen vehicle that was captured by a serial killer and, or stolen, and so that license plate ended up in their Flock system in Arizona, and they caught that serial killer. And he was literally on the prowl, waiting to harm another person at the very time when they caught him. So I'm, I, that kind of changed my mind when it became personal. A little too close to home.
Things tend to do that.
Yeah.
I think it's important to note, too, that the Flock camera system basically provides a lead. It does not do the investigation, right? An officer has to go out, investigate that, find out if everything that Flock is telling you is true and accurate and all that kind of stuff. It just gives you a lead, a great lead, where a lot of times there aren't any, so. You have something? Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, thank you. On the public records situation, is it creating any public records? Or how does that piece work on the system?
So we, it doesn't ever hit our system, so it does create a thirty-day public record with Flock. It's on their server, so if someone does a, although we own it, it's not on our system. So if someone does a public disclosure request, they have to deal with Flock, which is a private company, and after thirty days, it's gone. So for public disclosure, if we don't get a request within thirty days, we no longer have that record, so we don't have anything to provide. So that is kind of the beauty of the system. We don't have to have a large server, and we don't have to store it. Now, images that we do take for evidence become part of evidence, and they're protected from public disclosure as long as the case is active.
Does that, does that, for, could a person? Does that, does that, um, for, could a person, you know, identifies, have a public disclosure request for a Flock camera for the last, you know, twenty days of whatever information off the Flock camera?
I would think it would have to be a little more specific. Sadie, I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Be very specific.
For public disclosure, um, what would be on the camera, like license plates and, and things like that, they're, they would have, if it's under an exemption, it would have to be blacked out, and somebody, whoever's doing the disclosure would, would do that, and we would have to do the exemption.
Um, you know, I'm trying to ask basically of how much of a burden the public disclosure requests kind of thing.
Well, it sounds like it's not going to go through us, they'd have to deal with Flock, so they'd have to put the disclosure through Flock, and Flock would have to handle disclosures, not us. Is what it's sounding like.
Talking with other cities that have installed it, Lakewood, Puyallup, Yakima, none of them needed to add staff to handle the public disclosures versus body cameras.
Sure.
You have some that almost, all they do is watch body cameras, redact it. I don't know of any cities that have had to add staff to handle a large case of PDRs.
Interesting. Sounds like fun. No, yes. Yeah, you know, I think it's a, a great tool that people will really, obviously, you know, the police chief and the professionals and organizations know how valuable this is, um, so they'll be able to use it. It's, it's really odd. I think I take the position that, you know, talking to most of the public out there, it's something that they see value in, and that they would like to see it used in the City of Bonny Lake. It's used in many places, obviously, right now, all over the state, you know, it's, and it's, you know, if Lowe's is using it or a version of it, internally, Home Depot, whatever, in the future, any of the private organizations. And whether or not Bonny Lake does it is just going to, it'll leave us in a black hole, basically. If Bonny Lake didn't have this capability, you know, they would have all this information that there would be a robber or something in Auburn or what have you, but wouldn't know if they were, uh, suspect, drove through Bonny Lake. So that seems to be kind of odd if we just, you know, because personally, I think it's like probably wildly unconstitutional in the end, but, um, you know, it's, that's, I have a lot of internal knowledge that many people don't have about things like this. So, uh, it's fine for the public. If the public wants it, it's their city, they can, uh, you know, have it as a tool. I think it'll be, you know, we have a lot of traffic in the City of Bonny Lake that comes through. I could imagine that hopefully, you know, it'll make Bonny Lake not the place for criminals to come as much as they, once we start nabbing them a little bit out there, they'll know that Bonny Lake shouldn't be the place to come and do criminal activities or be a criminal, you know, go someplace else. Hopefully, right?
That's it, yeah. Any further comments? All right. Looking for a direction, it sounds like to bring it forward is what I'm hearing, I think.
It's a no-cost thing, right? We have a grant for two years.
And head nods, so I think, yeah, just bring it forward.
One on the consent agenda, or the, is that what we're asking, consent or full issue?
I would say it's full. Guestful counsel issues.
Baldwin, a chance to speak if she wants to.
There you go, yeah, good idea. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion items or business, we are adjourned.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yay.
Ready for another marathon session.
The faster meetings we've ever had.